With a team, you know. But it could happen to anyone.
No, here's my. Okay, I will call the regular Tuesday, March 7, 2017, Oregon City Commission Work Session to Order. Call and roll, please.
Commissioner Ide, here. Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell is absent this evening. Mayor Holliday?
Here. And I talked to Commissioner O'Donnell earlier. He said unless I thought that it was important for him to call in, otherwise we'll just leave him off tonight. Okay.
Anybody for feature gen items?
Okay, then we'll move on. Discussion items 3A, 17-159, Oregon City Risk Management Program Implementation. Mr. Loeffler.
Good evening, Commissioner. We're here to present a topic that nobody wants but everyone needs, and that's insurance. Of course, my colleagues here probably won't agree with me, but so we're here to discuss the city implementation of the city's risk management plan. I'd like to clarify that we, the city currently has a risk management program in effect. We're coming to the commission to formalize it and to ask for your approval on both the policy and a resolution that will, for approval at an upcoming commission meeting. My guests this evening are the city's agent of record from Brown and Brown Northwest, Ron Cutter. Have a seat. And also John Sarkasian, also known as Jay-Z. He's a senior risk consultant for CIS, the city's insurance agent, liability and property insurance.
Well, thank you very much for having us this evening. You have in front of you a document that looks like that, a summary of insurance. Like Jim mentioned, I'm with Brown and Brown Northwest. We're the insurance agent record for the city of Oregon City, as well as a number of other cities in Oregon. So very important to any risk management plan is transferring of risk and financing of risk. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight, and you're doing that by procuring insurance through CIS or City County Insurance Services. So if you go to the first page, or actually page number two here, what this is intended to be is a very high-level summary of your current insurance coverages that you have in place. And so your property coverages, which cover the buildings and contents and your mobile equipment, you have $1,000 deductible. If you go to the next page, there's some additional sub-limits on there, one of which I'd like to point out to you is your earthquake coverage. You've got $15 million worth of earthquake coverage. Most, we work with 170 public entities, and I'd say a large majority of them probably are underinsured for earthquake. You know, $15 million for the amount of property that the city of Oregon City has is, you know, probably, it's not going to be enough in the event we have the big Cascadia event.
Nothing's going to be enough.
No.
We have the Cascadia event.
It's not. It's not. I mean, so the options are, you know, you procure the coverage that's available to you, which that's what we're doing, and in the event of the big one, high probability is it'll be declared a disaster by the feds, and then we're going to have FEMA funds available to us. Or you go out and you spend money and buy additional earthquake coverage, and I can tell you insurers in the Pacific Northwest are scared to death of earthquakes, so it's not cheap. Moving along, page four, this is your equipment breakdown, or also known as your boiler and machinery coverage. This dovetails with your property coverage. You have $100 million worth of limits there for this line of coverage, subject to $1,000 deductible.
Can I back up a second?
Yeah.
So if we go back to page three, under flood insurance, why do we have $10 million for the flood insurance?
So that's what, you know, we can get $10 million worth of flood through CIS. To get more than that, we'd have to buy what we call a DIC, or difference in conditions policy.
Now, I mean, why do we have that much? What do we have? I mean, I was just rattling that through my head very quickly. What do we have that's in danger of a flood here?
Clackamas Park.
Well, but, I mean, all there is at Clackamas Park is the restrooms. Beyond that, you have, you know, the...
EOT.
What?
EOT, in the Oregon Trail.
Which theoretically is above the flood plain, right?
That is in the flood zone.
I think in the 99-year flood.
Yeah, the 100-year flood.
100-year, whatever.
Considered a special flood hazard area.
Even if you look at the end of the Oregon Trail, at Interpretative Center, the whole thing isn't worth $5 million bucks.
And actually, we have a separate flood policy for that, and I'll tell you, well, the reason for that is because if you're in the special flood hazard area, there's a $500,000 deductible.
Right.
So that's why we have a separate flood policy for that.
And we'll take a look at it, Mayor, and get back with you.
It just seems like an awful high amount when I flash through, you know, what city facilities we actually have that are in danger of a flood.
Good point. So then, page five, this is your crime coverage. When you think of crime, think of stolen money, theft of money, and in most cases, that's an embezzlement-type situation. So this is structured a little uniquely in that we have a $50,000, we have $50,000 limit built into your property policy, and then the city's buying an additional $500,000 worth of coverage. So you have $550,000 worth of crime coverage.
Aren't those people bonded?
We don't, this satisfies the statutory requirement for bonds.
Okay.
So, I mean, this is actually broader, because it covers every employee instead of just the individuals that are bonded.
Mayor, we only have one employee who's bonded, and that's the city manager.
And then we get to your liability coverage. This is going to cover tort claims against the city, you know, employment-related claims, slips and falls, you know, allegations against public works, police claims. So you have a $5 million per occurrence limit, so for any one claim, $5 million worth of coverage. We can go up to $10 million with CIS. We can have higher limits there. And then an annual aggregate of $15 million. So you have what we call an aggregate deductible of $50,000. So this means that the first $50,000 of liability claims for the year, the city's paying for. So, you know, first claim saves $10,000, that erodes that $50,000 aggregate to $40, and that just keeps eroding down until it's gone, and then after that, it's CIS's money paying the claims. And you get a $37,500 credit for taking on that, that retention or deductible.
I'm a little fuzzy on the details, but I remember hearing something about recreational immunity not extending as much as it did for parks, and therefore our liability might be higher. Am I getting that correct?
You are. That's actually Jay-Z's area of expertise. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes, as you're probably aware, last year in January in the city of Portland, a claim was filed by an individual that went through the court system and eroded the recreational use immunity protections. Basically said that employee...
Sir, can you pull that mic down towards you a little bit, so that the folks on TV can hear you? Thank you.
What it basically, the courts concluded was that employees do not actually own the land, therefore they can be held personally liable. However, that's not totally true when you consider that a city is also required by law to identify their employees. So if they're being in a lawsuit, you still have to defend them. We're going to defend them. But we still have the potential of litigation and large claims because of the erosion. The legislature is currently working on fixing that right now, as we sit. I personally feel, and CIS probably feels the same way, that with millions of dollars invested by the state in their park systems and the thousands of employees that the state system has, they're not going to just turn a blind eye to it. Unfortunately, what we're running into right now is that the trial lawyers association is fighting this very hard. But we're confident that something will occur, and we're hoping that it will restore the immunity protection as it was before. In the interim period, what we're telling our members is that as your public works employees are going through the parks on a daily, a weekly, a monthly basis, everything they do, document, even if it's on a 5-by-7 index card, if they pick up glass, if they pick up nails, if they make a repair of a piece of equipment, if they close an S hook on a swing, anything they do, document it, because during this interim period of the recreational use immunity demise, we need that documentation for the attorneys to defend you in court. That's about the only thing they have going right now. When you look over the past year-plus, while this has been going on, we've had little to no claims and little to no problems statewide. And that's 238 cities and 28 counties in our pool for coverage.
All it takes is one.
That's right. You're correct.
Well, my intelligence from the legislature is this is going to get taken care of this session, so.
We're hoping so. Page seven is your business auto coverage, so...
You missed one there. I'm curious about this $50,000 for cybersecurity.
Yep. So again, CIS provides cyber liability coverage. You can buy limits up to, I want to say it's 250,000, so it's, you know, 50,000 is kind of the minimum amount. This coverage actually renews July 1, so we look at those options. We'll be looking at that here shortly, and, you know, evaluating the additional premium that would be due if we wanted to bump those limits up.
So if someone hacks the city's system, this would help?
Well, that's really, it's more for, you know, you have personally identifiable information on individuals, and so you have an obligation to protect that. And so if there's a breach of that, you know, people's identity is out there, then, you know, that's really what it's intended, as well as the ransomware, you know, where if somebody takes your server hostage and says, "Pay us $50,000."
Sure, with the council, too, that just as last year, last fall, we had a couple of cities, I'm not going to name them, where an employee inadvertently placed the W2s for the employees in the envelope with a large window, which exposed their date of birth and their social security number. They had to access the cybersecurity coverage that we have, and we have a company that will run credit checks continuously for an entire year, just to make sure that there is no security breach of what you're required by law to protect. So it can happen, even in today's day and age. It's not just getting into your computer mainframe. There's a lot more than that.
It just seems to me that, given the things that have happened in other institutions, whether we're talking about, you know, Target, whoever, that doesn't seem like a lot of coverage to me.
Yeah, we can certainly explore higher limits there.
Okay.
And then the auto, you know, the liability limits follow the general liabilities. You have $5 million per occurrence for any one accident. I didn't, you know, again, this is a very, very brief summary. I didn't include the actual schedule of the autos. It shows the comp and collision deductibles by vehicle, but...
Well, that reminds me, Jim, why do we have a police car down at the auto body shop?
Some guy in a truck hit him at, come around, he was in the parking lot, and that guy had come around the corner and came around and hit his front end.
Rott roll. Okay.
So the last piece of insurance here is the flood policy we have down on the Interpretative Center, and so that, you know, again, is in the special flood hazard area, and so as such, you have a $500,000 deductible for the building and another $500,000 deductible for the contents. So we have this flood policy in place to kind of bridge that gap. The next few pages, four pages, are just summaries of the claims that the city has had, just the numbers. There's no specifics here. Broken out by the lines of coverage, the first being auto physical damage, so that would just be your vehicles being damaged, you know, somebody hitting a police car or a vehicle backing into a pole or something like that. And then the next one is your general liability claims. The next is your auto liability claims, and then lastly, or property claims. So really, most of your claims are in the first two pages there, the auto phys dam. I look, generally, I look at these two charts, the number of claims by coverage year and the total incurred by coverage year. And, you know, you can see for the auto physical damage, we were, you know, we were improving and got worse in '15, '16, and '16, '17 is better than last year, but, you know, the year's not over yet, so we're keeping our eyes on that. Next being the general liability, where you had a real spike in claims in 2014, '15, in terms of the total incurred or the dollars, but we've seen a nice reduction or recovery for '15, '16, and '16, '17. So kudos to your risk team for doing a lot of good work there. And then your auto liability and property claims are basically insignificant, as you can see. There's just very few claims and really not much in the way of dollar values.
So back to page one of three, I guess. Oh, no, that's auto.
Where did you know about?
General liability...
Oh, first one. Right. So did any of that include the settlement for the place down at Second and all that?
Yes, 303 High Street. That's in the 2014, '15 year.
Okay. All right. That's all.
So that is a very brief summary of your insurance program, and like I say, we'll be looking at options here within, let's see, what are we, March, probably within the next two months for your July 1 renewal, and we'll make revisions as necessary.
Do you want to talk about rate increases?
Actually, I think I'm going to kick it over to these guys now. Do you guys want to take it from here?
Sure. Unless, what, Jay-Z, you want to talk about the increases or...
I'll leave it up to you.
Okay.
We can touch on that if you'd like.
Close on that. How's that?
Okay, sure. So we're, we don't know what your rate increases are going to be this year. You know, it's going to be specific to your loss experience, but we know the average for CIS members is going to be an increase of around 3.5%. For auto physical damage, it's going to be closer to 6% or 7%, where the property coverage is going to come down by about 7%. So we're not anticipating anything dramatic in terms of rate increases for '17, '18. You know, I think the city saw some pretty big increases two years ago, and we're not looking to repeat that at all this year. I think something in the mid-single digits is probably what we're anticipating overall. And that's not including workers' comp.
And Mayor, I was remiss in not introducing our risk team. When Nancy was the risk manager, she was a party of one. I'm fortunate enough to have, you know, four people, and of course, under Tony, Tony's, you know, in charge, but...
Well, so Nancy would have been a lot cheaper.
Probably.
Just saying.
So I'm, I assume the risk management duties when Nancy retired, and then I was fortunate enough to have Katie and Katie and Jamie Reed, who are part of the risk team. And of course, we have a very strong relationship with our agent of record, Ron, and of course, CIS, our normal risk consultant is normal. Our usual risk consultant is unavailable tonight, and Jay-Z is sitting in for him, so we appreciate him doing that very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, can I ask a super quick question before we move on here?
I guess.
So can, just a point of clarification, can you, so the $50,000, basically a deductible, right? So if you take auto, general liability, and those things, on those columns, say for year, like 2015, '16, what is that 50? So we pay the first $50,000.
Right.
So are there any numbers, like, say on '15, '16, is it, do you add up on these three total incurred, and then you guys pay beyond that? Is that, in terms of, is that what it goes toward, that $50,000?
Exactly, yeah. So, you know, the claims, as they come in, that $50,000 is eroded, and then once it's gone, then CIS pays from there. And to be quite honest, this report I printed off the CIS website, I'm not sure if that $50,000 is reflected in that number or not. If that's what your question is, that...
Yeah, basically, my question was, say on 2015, '16, if you look at...
Actually, $50,000 higher. Is that...
Yeah, is it, so basically, did we pay the whole 50, or did you guys pay?
I, off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that. So that's a good question.
My, I think my, what I'm kind of getting at, my, we get a lot of letter suits, you know, DUI investigation or something, and the attorney, while he's at it, will throw some suit our way, and so a lot of times, we have concern about, you know, sometimes they're legitimate, sometimes it's ridiculous. And so this, there's this thing about, do we fight this, or does it just get paid because it's cheaper to just, here's your $10,000, go away, that kind of thing? So I, it was kind of, just kind of processing that, and maybe the better thing for that is probably a CIS question of, if I wanted to have a longer conversation about that, this probably isn't the place. Who would I talk to?
Your claims examiner, that is assigned to the particular claim.
So Dave Nelson is normally the law enforcement person.
He's my supervisor, and he handles law enforcement, loss control, risk management, best practices, consultation, but when you have a claim filed, he doesn't touch that. The claim examiner handles it.
John Stouffer?
Stouffer probably gets most of your claims, yes. He would be the one that you can talk to, and he will negotiate with you all. You know, if he feels that it's best to pay the claim, then he'll recommend that, but if you're adamantly opposed to that, then we'll take another route, and we'll work with the attorneys and defend it. It's just not automatic. We don't just ultimately make the decision without your involvement. We always keep our members involved in the process, and you should be updated on all of those.
Yeah, and Jim, if you have, you know, like a claim issue that you want to, you can bring it, then we can certainly schedule a meeting with the claims rep.
I think it, yeah, we'll talk to you about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what about a disgruntled employee suing the city, or wrongful discharge or something? I didn't see that listed today.
It's going to be under your general liability.
It's GL, general liability. And you'll kind of see here, as I go through some of the summaries, where that might, where that might be. So as, we already kicked into the overview. We've had Ron and Jay-Z doing the policy overview. I'm going to do the claim summary and talk briefly about the risk management policy, excuse me, and we have a short list of selected accomplishments that the risk team is proud to present before the commission. So as this, this picture and chart is actually a representation of what Ron was provided from CIS, our annuals, I got this from the annual summary at the CIS conference, and it shows the three years, the two past years and the current year. The large claim that we discussed was the, was a general liability suit by the residents of 303 High Street, and that was settled, and hence, it was a large expense. But since then, we've decreased considerably. We, this was as of the end of February, so since then, we have, currently, we had 14, we're up to 14 claims for this year. Six are open, and incurred losses are about $50,000. So, or at least that's projected losses, because some of those can change based on, based on recovery, such as for a police car that was hit, we have the whole thing, we pay the whole thing or incur the whole thing, and then CIS gets, tries to get money back from the other insurance company. So those, it's a fluctuating number.
Could I ask a question? Can you go back to that previous slide?
Sure.
The picture there of the boat ramp?
Yes.
If you're talking about flood insurance and why there might be that much money, I know those boat ramps were, or can be very expensive, and we had that flood a few years ago, and the ramps were damaged. Is that something that, because it's in the water, that it's not necessarily that the city's responsibility, or I don't remember exactly?
Well, it's got to be scheduled, so it's got to be properties on your, it's scheduled.
Right, right.
And I'm, you know, not recalling that boat ramps are scheduled, so off the top of my head.
Yeah, we worked, I know we worked on that a lot the last year that I was here, but we got them, I thought we got them scheduled.
I'd have to double check.
I can hear Ron.
Yeah.
If you have a pier, that would be covered.
But those are expensive. If there's damage, I know that would, I was just trying to come up with something to help you with your $10 million.
Yeah, I'm not sure it was the flood, that particular flood, but the '96 flood, which changed the course of the river, which actually did the undermining, it wasn't necessarily the flood event itself. It was the changing course of the river that caused the undermining at the bow dock.
During a flood. It was, there's the ramp, and then, and then there's the docks, too. So that might have been the docks that occurred.
That could be, yeah.
And...
There's another one of Jim's cars.
This is, this slide, general liability, that includes people suing us, sewage spills, wrongful terminations, those, you know, the good news is that, as you can see, GL, general liability for the city is, that's the biggest expense, $73,000. The chart on your, to the right is a little bit difficult to read, but the average for cities our size or big is $98,000. So we're, we're better than average in all categories. That's auto property damage, that's, you know, police crews are doing a pit maneuver and losing its front end. So that's 12% of our, of our average claims, and roughly $10.6,000. Average is about $18,000 for other cities our size. Auto liability is negligible, it's $500, and for other cities, it's about $22,000. So we're looking good there. And for property, $3.3,000, and the average is 14. So in all cases, we're, we're better than average, and we like to keep it that way. So that's all I have as far as the insurance side, and I'll talk briefly about workers' comp. CIS does not, is not our workers' comp insurance. We have a separate agent with, with SAFE that we have our workers' comp through. So as you can see, this is, we have a five-year trend. That's how, that's how workers' comp is computed, and going from 2011 to 2015. The big spike is in 2013, is unfortunately, that was Officer Lipke, and that was a large expense and a tragedy. But you can see that our claims overall and our expenses haven't been that egregious, 50, 60. Last year was a very good year, and, you know, small number of claims, mostly medical-only, very, you know, fewer and fewer time-loss claims. So we're good about getting our injured employees back to work sooner rather than later. This is a representation of the previous chart. As you can see, our, the NCCI ERM is what's called a MOD. That's determines the city's rate, and we had been creeping down up until 2013, and then the incident happened, and then this year, 2016, we had a MOD of 1.0, which was, which is unfortunate, because that's what this average for other cities or other municipalities with our types of services pays. You know, anytime we were below 1.0, we are, we are paying less than what other cities with similar services pay. And as you can see, also, the total number of claims has decreased. Currently, we have, what, four claims open, only two are open, and none of which are time-loss for this year, for 2016. So we're doing much better as far as claims. So 2016 doesn't show up there. That's, that's the year that's in progress. Our, our year for workers' comp goes from October through September. It's why it's that way, that that's kind of the policy that we have, and we're, might be trying to change that here in the future for liability insurance. It goes fiscal year July 1st to June 30th.
So what systems do you have in place to bring that MOD back down?
Very proactive safety committee. We've gone doing training for, you know, employees, trying to, we aggressively manage workers' time loss, anyone who's injured, and if they are on time-loss... if they are on time loss, making sure they're contacting their supervisor, or at least or I'm reaching out to them. So those are the, those are the big things. Time loss, you know, some, some of them are unenviable. You know, if someone, if a police officer injures a knee during an arrest, that, that could be a 50 or 60,000 dollar claim. And we try to, you know, we try to practice safe, you know, procedures as much as possible. Some of those are outside of our control.
There's things, man, like even things you would never think, like the, you know, officers wearing the external beauty carriers. For them, it's a comfort thing, the weight's off their hips. It's better on their knees getting in and out of patrol cars. There's no real tactical reason. It's just better for them to carry weight. And the other, another major thing, because I think we're as at-risk a group, us and probably public works, is literally supervision. You know, what we're requiring supervisors to do, how we're training, fitness programs. Do you guys have a stretch and flex program? Not a stretch.
Public Works, Public Works and Parks have, participate in stretch and flex.
Why not everybody else? At, at Easy Company where I worked, the office people did stretch and flex right along with the field guys.
We can, we can certainly bring that up at exec team, sir.
I want to see John Lewis flex. That's not fair, he's not here. You can't pick on people that aren't here.
The, the good news on this slide is that I've received advance notice from our, our agent that the MOD for next year is projected to go down to .94. So even though I, after Officer Lipke incident, I heart to heart with the underwriter from SAFE, and was more or less guaranteed, as much as they could assured, that it wouldn't necessarily impact our rates. I believe it has, because all things, all things equal, every, time loss has gone down, has, as has the number of claims. But our, our policy premiums have increased.
Has there ever, ever been a, a study done on if, like a multi-line discount, if we moved the workers' comp over to CIS? Would there be, I mean, and is it comparable service? And I don't know, I just wondered if that's ever been looked at.
We will go out for bids. There's good and bad with, with having separate, separate companies. Of course, SAFE, SAFE is a lot bigger than CIS, no, no offense to our CIS brethren. But, you know, it's, we did go out for bid about five years ago, and, and I am going to go out for bid this year as well, just because it's been a while, and to see what, what we have. CIS doesn't, hasn't been able to provide, you know, we've, what isn't shown in here is, we have consistently received a dividend from SAFE, has, albeit it has gone down. Started in the, in 80,000. Last year, it was 43,000. So that does reduce the, the actual cost of the premium somewhat. CIS being a pool hasn't, doesn't have that. But, you know, CIS does have workers' comp insurance as well, and we'll, I'm sure we'll get a bid from them. And just, almost, just a few more, just a few more achievements that the risk management program, we've received either the LOC, CIS Gold Safety or, Gold or Silver Safety Award in each of the last five years. Our current trend is an 80% decrease in loss, and as I mentioned, a 43,000 in, in dividend. Under Risk Management, Property Liability, we are grateful and applaud our new agent of record and all the help that, that not only Ron, but his team has done in, in helping the city and providing training for managers and employees, driver safety training, employee evaluation training. We saved some money in our renewal. And the work of the risk team here, we've recovered over $2,000, excuse me, $20,000 from citizens who have, who have damaged city property. So Katie has been, Katie Durfee has been aggressively, and, yeah, has aggressively been pursuing damage to city property and, and with, working with insurance companies to, to make sure that we, we get money when folks take out a sign or a street light or something.
A bunch of trees.
And trees, too. So, questions?
That's pretty.
Well, subject to any questions, that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Anybody?
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks for having us.
Thank, thank you both.
So who's next?
We're going to go to the Metro Resolution. The
County people aren't here?
Not yet.
All right.
Continue on. So at our last city commission meeting, had, under the city manager's report, a discussion about a resolution that Metro was passing as it relates to the regional policy and funding priorities for the 2000 state transportation legislation. And the recommendations put forward in the resolution were forwarded to the Metro Council from the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, J-PAC. They did recommend approving the resolution, as well as the legislative priorities and the projects identified underneath them. Really, as Oregon, the Portland metropolitan region continues to see economic growth, population growth, there, there are the pluses and the minuses to that. More job opportunities, higher wages. But we've also seen increased congestion in the area, increased impacts to air quality in the region. And so really, what this is trying to do is, I think that there, I think we would all agree that there's a need for adequate transportation funding throughout the region to address some of these major transportation issues we have. And there is a limited amount of funds available. And so really, this is trying to do a couple things in terms of getting the legislature to realize that the Portland metropolitan region is trying to speak with one voice in identifying priority projects that we are all agreeing to. And then also that the legislature needs to be a part of this solution, and it can't be just done by the local jurisdictions that, that have significant transportation, outstanding projects, maintenance, needed infrastructure that needs to be developed. And so part of this request was to use, you know, to have the commission's endorsement of these priorities, as well as the ability to use Oregon City's logo as they're down in Salem legislating for the additional funds. So it provided the Metro Council resolution, as well as the more detailed recommendations that came out of it. And it started with setting up some of the priorities. Fix it first. Obviously, the more we can do to address the maintenance of our existing facilities reduces the long-term costs of later maintenance or full replacement of those, of that infrastructure. Addressing metropolitan area congestion, they identified three bottleneck priorities in the region, of which they would like to see additional funding for. That includes along the Rose Quarter, Oregon 217, and then the widening of the I-205 Abernathy Bridge, obviously, impacts our commuters and our, and our citizens on a, on a daily basis.
What was the first project?
It's up in the Rose Quarter.
So
The I-5 area.
Yeah. So I'd heard that the county was also advocating for adding another lane on 205.
That's part of the project.
Of the Abernathy Bridge project.
Well, so here, let me, let me provide a little explanation, because we had a, a discussion about this at C4 last week. I did not give Oregon City's endorsement, mostly because we hadn't had this discussion yet. So I just sort of laid back and told them that. The guy from, what's his name?
Ryan Winchimer?
No.
Or from the county?
The county's lobbyist guy.
It'll come to me.
He just sent out an email earlier today.
Chris?
Chris Lyons, there you go. But he was talking about, you know, these, and Ryan Winchimer was too, a little bit about the, the timing of these things. And so they would do the bridge first. And they would be able to do the bridge, and then do, I think it was the Rose Quarter, and then come back to the, adding the additional lanes on 205, or the additional lane each direction on 205, because there's a lot of other technical stuff that has to get done before they can do that piece, including, you know, that one choke point there, right at Westland, before you come down to the bridge, which is all basalt on both sides. So there's going to have to be some blasting and other kinds of things that are going to have to happen, which is going to make it more expensive. So I, I think the theory was the, the, the bridge, Rose Quarter, in the same sort of general timeframe, and then the 205 would probably be another four, five years, six years down the line, as far as the, the added lanes. And then what was the other project?
17.
Oh, 217. Yeah, and I don't think there, there's concern about not trying to do everything at once, because then you pretty much just shut down the entire Portland Metro if you do that.
The Abernathy Bridge, is that also going to be shored up for seismic, because that is
Yeah, that's part of it. They're, they're going to increase the piers, do some different kinds of tying the decks together, along with widening that out and redoing the interchanges on at least the Westland side. I'm not, I don't think there's any intention of doing anything to the Oregon City side.
I think that was something we were hoping to have a discussion with them about, especially as it relates to 99E onto 205 southbound, that on-ramp there, you know, acceleration lanes.
Yeah, somehow maybe, you know, doubling that up or whatever.
Mm-hmm. And then, correct. So the remainder of that project then would be the three-lane section from Abernathy to Stafford, where you have an existing three-lane.
So to, to finish my little piece of this report, I was shocked when Mr. Lyons came up and said, you know, we have a $1.7 billion deficit in, in the budget coming up, and none of the, this money, do they intend to impact that budget deficit. So anything they do to fix the 1.7 does not include money for this. So then he went on to list probably 20 different additional funding measures to pay for this, whether it is, you know, additional gas taxes, or vehicle tab fees, or registration fees, or, I mean, you know, it went on and on and on and on. So I have a real problem with us claiming that we have a budget deficit, yet we're adding, you know, 50 or 60 million dollars to pay for illegal aliens healthcare and, and other kinds of things that we should be taking care of, you know, the priorities of the state first. So that's my little bit on that. Go ahead.
The third one was in investment in multimodal solutions for congestion relief, supporting the seventh round of Connect Oregon funding for non-road multimodal transportation projects. This program's been critical for addressing the region's freight mobility needs, as well as advancing the region's active transportation strategy. Prioritize transit, one of the main goal, one of the main projects here is the Southwest Corridor, and the, the planning in that area for light rail. Improve regional air quality, increasing congestion mitigation air quality funding for the, the program that currently exists. And then support and expand local options. The legislature should remove existing restrictions on local and regional revenue-raising authority, and avoid enacting new limitations or preemptions to give local authorities the ability. If we can come up with revenue-generating options that are supported by our communities, we should have the ability to do that, to address the transportation issues that we have. There's, you know, and that was a pretty high overview of what some of the priorities and the projects identified in here. I think the, the main thing is, is really trying to demonstrate to the legislature that there is a need, and that speaking with one voice as the region will hopefully help convince them of the need for them, that they also need to be a partner in this. So, you know, this has been, like I said, vetted through C4 Subcommittee, up through C4, up through J-PAC, up through Metro. And so really, just seeing the questions that the commission may have, and any desire to support or not support or stay neutral on, on, on the legislation, the efforts down at the legislature to, to increase funding. This was, you know, increasing transportation funding was one of the goals of the commission. And so this is another opportunity that we could have to help further that.
So before I go on to Commissioner Mengelberg, I did want to add one little thing. What they're talking about is, to, to accomplish, what they're talking about in this resolution requires an additional billion dollars a year, just to put that number in perspective. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So having attended the Alternative Mobility Standards Meeting just last week, the glaring need of Beaver-Creek Road intersection at 213 is on top of my mind. How would that project be positioned potentially for some of these funds, should it get approved?
Currently, it hasn't risen to a level of identification. I guess it, part of this depends on what do we identify as the improvements at that intersection? You know, I, I, it's, it's hard to know, you know, if we, if they came up with a billion dollars, would we eventually be able to do some more significant work at that intersection, potentially? You know, 213's an important connection from Clackamas County in Oregon City to, to the state highway system. It's a state facility, freight mobility on that corridor, just like 99E. So from that standpoint, it would, it would meet one of the, the goals and the priorities of making sure that our, our freight corridors operate efficiently. But
But in our discussions with Mr. Winchimer from ODOT Region 1, the likelihood of us getting funding to do, or of that piece of facility getting funding is probably in the 15 to 20-year timeframe, I think.
Sure. So in addition to the question, I just have a general comment. The, the descriptions of where the funding would go makes a lot of sense to me. It's diverse, it covers a lot of the hot buttons that have been in the region for a long time. And so I support this.
Anybody else?
Mr. Shaw. So I do agree with Mayor Holliday that looking at the financial side of this is, I'm pretty curious about that also. But on the other hand, I think we have to show that we, we need partners on our side of this, and those folks need our assistance on this. It's, it's a regional deal. So, so I'm, you know, you got to weigh that out. I think that by putting our name on this thing, shows us, and shows everybody else out there, that we are agreeing to partner with, with whoever else has projects, and that they will, will partner with us also. So I think it's, it's a partnership, it's a regional thing. So, but I am also curious about the funding. But, and I really like the way they prioritize this list. So.
Chris, do you have anything?
Just that I too would support moving, joining forces with Metro, and just with the understanding that the money's not there. But at least we're putting it out there, that there's some really great needs here. And then I just have one other, not question, but just comment. So it talks about investing in, oh, no, light rail, wherever, whichever bullet that was. What about Oregon City? I know we've talked about this much in previous years, but, you know, where's that discussion, or is it even out there, for bringing light rail to Oregon City?
It, it has not been a discussion topic for quite a long time.
A long time, that's what I thought.
So I can, I can answer that in a little more detail. I think that the likelihood of light rail coming to Oregon City from where it is right now, anytime in the next 10 or 15 years is extremely unlikely, mostly because of what has happened in the unincorporated section of Clackamas County in their renewal vote, and their anti-light rail vote, and that sort of thing. The other question that I would have to have is, where, what exactly would we do with light rail here?
Well, I'm
And so that's, I mean, and that's an absolutely discussion for another day. So
I know. I was just asking.
Commissioner Mengelberg, do you have something else, or is my computer slow?
Even if this is only for, if these principles hold over time, I think Oregon City would be well-positioned to take advantage of future funding. And I'm really encouraged that one of the major projects directly affects us. So of course, we should support this. of the major projects directly affects us, so of course we should support this.
Right. I, I guess for purposes of this discussion and vote, or whatever we're gonna do here, I agree with the, you know, with the first pieces of this. And I think, given what I'm hearing from, coming from the legislature, by the time we get to the stuff I don't really like, we're probably not gonna get there. So, you know, I think the, the key piece is, number one, fix it first, you know, which is what we're committed to doing here by our pavement utility fee, we're, we're taking care of the stuff that we own, we're keeping a roof on the house, all that sort of thing. And if the state could learn one thing about budgeting, it would be, let's take care of the stuff that we already own before we start building new stuff.
There you go.
So with, with that said, I think there's a lot of stuff down the line that I have philosophical disagreements with, but that disagreement doesn't extend, well, it extends outside my role as mayor, and I can make those arguments, you know, in other places, in other venues, but for the purpose of, of the legislative session this time around, I can support this going forward.
So I'm not, since we're in a work session, not asking for a vote, I think I've got clear direction on the ability to respond
Okay.
In, in support of the
Do you have any in your report, Mr. Manager?
I do not tonight.
Okay, well, unfortunately, our folks from the county aren't here, and they had plenty of time, so we'll have to reschedule them for
Katie's on the phone, I wonder if she's in touch with them there or not, are they on their way?
I think she was calling.
Stuck in traffic or something here.
Well, it's, it's six-thirty, we started at five-thirty, even if they figured that Lefler were gonna take a half an hour, they should have been here at six. So unless someone else, any answer? Then we're adjourned.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.